I'd like to call the Blackstone School Committee, Blackstone Millville School Committee meeting to order on April 24, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, I will let Jane take over.
Thank you.
You can do that. You can keep going. We were gonna have Sarah do it, but she threatens to leave. She's all dressed up. My apologies.
We were together.
We were. Okay.
Set the...
Should we do introductions?
No.
Introduction of members. Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Jack Keith, Blackstone.
And I'm Jane Reggio from Millville.
Erin Finaco, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Matt Erwinworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
At this point, we've reached the public forum of our meeting. Is there anyone who has anything they'd like to share with the group? Okay. We did have warrants, so I will entertain a motion to approve the warrants. So moved on Agenda A. Oh, Consent Agenda A? Yes, so moved by...
Second.
Tara, seconded by Karen. Any discussion? All right, it's been moved Consent Agenda A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. At this point in time, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah for a presentation, and she'll turn it over to someone else, but for the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools regarding our regional agreement.
Yeah, however you'd like to do that, sure. So, as the committee is aware, and the community for that matter, we have embarked upon the process of pursuing a possible amendment to our regional agreement and doing quite a bit of work there in terms of getting the regional agreement up to date and in compliance with any statutory and regulatory language that needs to be changed, while also looking at the agreement as a whole. And so with that, we have a very special guest this evening who's gonna talk to us a bit about the process itself. He is the former Executive Director of the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. So Steve, if you'd like to come on up to the table, that'd be great, and walk the committee and the community through a little bit about the role of Mars and the process itself, about how we go through possibly amending our regional agreement.
Be very glad to.
Thank you.
As you introduce, I'm Steve Hemmam. I'm the former Executive Director of Regional School Association. I was from 2008 to 2015, and I went back to my regional, Narragansett Regional School District as an interim superintendent, was involved in getting the funding for the new elementary school, which I had started eight years before that, never spear a project. And then I went back to the Mars as the assistant executive director in charge of our consulting group in 2012 through questions from regions saying, "We need some help in when we do things," strategic planning, reviewing how we operate, or regional agreements, updating them and how we do that. So we formed a consulting group. We have about 15 people part of our group, primarily retired superintendents or administrators who have been spending their career in education. Mine's been in education about 48 years, and I was 38 years active, and then the last 10 years doing this work that we do. Mars has been involved with 12 districts, updating their regional agreements. It is quite a process. You have to, and I will mention this here, but just dealing with the Department of Education to get everything agreed to is a process unto itself, and we have very good working relationships with them. We know types of things that they wanna see put in in defining things. And they are getting very sticky now on defining things. An example you might see in an agreement saying, "We're gonna assess if we're gonna do something on a per pupil basis." They're gonna say, "What per pupil basis? Are you gonna deal with the kids that are in your building? You're gonna have a foundation enrollment? What are you gonna use? What's the defining?" So you have to be very specific these days in how you're gonna define that. So why don't I start with this, and we go through the process, and I think you have it in front of you, is one of the things that we talk about, and I'll just quickly an overview, and then we're gonna go in some detail, is that we take your current agreement and review it for how does your agreement call for amending your agreement. One of the things I wanna mention, people say on a regional agreement, "Well, we're opening the agreement." You do not open the agreement. You amend the agreement. Because you could go through a whole process that meant do an amendment and change, and it fails, that agreement you have in place today is what's still there. So it doesn't change until you change it. Different than when you're dealing collective bargain agreements, when they say, "Open up an agreement," is a totally different situation. We review state laws concerning regions, form a regional amendment committee, and I've talked to Sarah. We've talked about it, and you follow what we would've recommended, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. So you've done a good job with that. Community relations program, how do you get it out? And you need to sell it to the communities. Remember, the towns are the ones that voted to create Blackstone Millville Regional School District and the school committee, so they're gonna vote when you do any amendments. You gotta vote so they know clearly what you're doing. Review suggestion amendments to the current agreement. What do you wanna put in? What changes do you wanna make? When submitting an amendment, all parts must agree, and your superintendents said state laws and regulations, and must agree to that. We have from the Department of Education checkoff list, so we know what needs to be there. You will produce an amended agreement. You'll seek preliminary approval from the Department of Education before you send it out to the towns. What you don't wanna do is go through an agreement, send to the towns, they voted, then you send to the department, says, "Oh, no. You got five things that you gotta change." Now you're starting back again. So we work a very close process with them. The amendment agreement is voted in each town. On the amendment, it is at a town meeting, and it's a majority vote at a town meeting, and then final approval by the Commissioner of Education. All amendments have to be signed off by the Commissioner. He has people to do it, then they'll tell him it's okay, and then he'll sign it. My understanding and looking at your agreement, that you, in 1982, you went to a K-12, somewhere around there, and your last amendments were in 1998, somewhere in there. Before I forget the thing is, we have been working with districts, and two in particular that we're working with, that they had done amendments, but they never sent them into the department, where they never got votes, whatever. So what we will do, and I'll explain a little bit more, is that we call the department and say, "Okay." First of all, we ask you, "What do you have on file?" And then we ask the department, "What they have on file?" And we found a number of times what they think has been amended has not been approved or signed off. We have worked with the department, and what we do, saying, "Okay, we'll take those that you say amendments, we put them into an agreement that you think you have, we send that to the department, say, 'Okay, now we're gonna work from that.'" And then what we do is then we have to deal with, and I'll get to it again, but I think repeating will be helpful, we then take the agreement, and with the department, we then have to go through and do a line process, is that a markup, saying, "What did you delete? What did you add?" Then we have to have a clean copy. The other thing is to mention very quickly, and I'll get to it again, but I'm thinking of it, is that your agreement follows, I can give you agreements that were back done in 1960s and 70s, and yours follows with language the same. What happened was, the first ones, and I think it was one of the first ones, they used to tell me up in McCann, which is a vocational school in North Adams, is that that was one of the first ones, everybody copied that. And they copied, the order doesn't make sense when you start looking at it. You talk about the school committee, but you don't talk about the type of region. Then they talk about assessment, and like yours says, like nine talks about the budget. We gotta do a budget before you can do an assessment. So the fourth thing we would do is reorder the agreement, so it makes sense to go through. So again, we take a look, and see what you've done. Your agreement was, I said, "We take what's on file, has the agreement updated, amendments we wanna take a look at? What does DESE have on file? What do they have? And then opportunity to update the agreement with all the amendments into a document." The department won't make you go back and redo that. They said, "We move forward." So we've worked with them, very carefully with that. One of the things is that your agreement says when you do amend it, you can't do anything that's going to absolve the towns of financial obligations, and then you also can do it, school committee initiated, but also 10% of the voters from the town could do, if they wanted to, do an amendment. And again, it's a required majority vote at all member town meetings that you would call, and it could be a special or a regular. It's important when you say to go to town meeting, put in special or regular, you don't wanna limit yourself, I'm sorry, annual or special. You don't wanna limit yourself to an annual, you wanna be able to do some things that are special. And a lot of times, our committees don't wanna do an updated regional agreement, dividing it in annual, there's so many things going in annual, they'd rather have it as special and be the only thing on the agenda that you're talking about, because it's very important how you do that. Why it's important to update? Education Reform Act of 93. Major change, no education operated. Also new laws and regulations, and opportunity to update the agreement in the current interest of the school district and the communities. In 2007 is when they adopted, that came in that you had to use the statutory method, and again, that's not in your current agreement, that has to be defined in there. Process to amend, so here's what we talk about in detail. Form a regional amendment committee. And talking with Sarah, you've got members of the school committee, you've got selectmen and FinCon members, and you've got people from communities from there. How many members do you think? About 10 or 12?
13? 12 or 13?
13. And what you would do is elect a chairman and a vice chair, and then have somebody, because now you're subject to the open meeting law, you have to somebody to take the minutes, and you hire us to work with you. We would do up the agenda, give you a post, and we take care of all those requirements that you have to follow. You cannot have a majority of your school committee, a quorum on that committee. Now, what generally then happens is we talk about is once the amendment committee is working through all the process, the selectmen and FinCon go back to their townspeople and talk to them, back to the school committee, so you're keeping up to date, and then comes back to the amendment committee, then you come up with a final document, and then there's a whole review process. Review the current agreement for issues to amend, what do people, what are the concerns are, what are they there? Incorporate state laws and regulations and current practices. We have a lot of the wording that can be used already that we know is acceptable. Review the section, produce an amendment agreement which is presented to the school committee. Now, it goes back to the school committee, and your agreement says that you can do an amendment. You then, as school committee, then can say, "Okay, we agree, we wanna make some changes if we do that." And then you send it out to the member towns as a process by which you send it to the selectmen of each community. Approve, not approve, and change it. You seek approval. Now, in that process, before it goes out, and we're constantly doing it as we go with each section with the Department of Education to make sure that they agree to it. What happens is Christine Lynch and Ruth Hirsch are the two people responsible we deal with, then has to go over to legal. Legal then will come back and say, "Are there any legal aspects of it?" One of the things that we find in the review is they say, "You wrote something, do you really know what that means? And does everybody agree what that means? Because in 25 or 30 years, none of you are gonna be at this table, so the new people can actually follow and know exactly what your intent was and how they're supposed to operate." A new superintendent, new business manager coming in, they need that document to know exactly how they're supposed to operate with that. Send the agreement to the selectmen of each town, and then what happens is the selectmen will place that on a warrant. Now, what you tend to do is after, when you send it to the towns, then you go out with the amendment committee, and us consultants would go, and we work, go to the selectmen of each town and go over that with them in detail. Ask them to have a combined, do you have finance commissions or advisory boards in each town?
Finance committees.
Finance committees. So we say, try to have a combined meeting, so we go over everything. The selectmen wanna, concerned of the operations, finance wants to know how the assessment and so forth is done. But we make sure we go in detail separately each town, so they clear that and see, you can do a combined if you want, but any which way, you reach out to them. And then you'd also, part of that is you wanna reach out and have community meetings as well, so everybody knows what's going on, it's transparent, what are you doing, and what's the updating, what are you trying to do. Voters approve or disapprove the amendment agreement. When it goes to town meeting, remember, what's going to town meetings was been approved by the department. It's an up or down vote. They can't make a change there. If they make a change, they wanna make a change, then the agreement doesn't go. Yes, ma'am?
If it has multiple amendments, can they approve some and not other?
No.
So it's the whole document?
Whole document. Whole document. It's the whole document.
Oof.
And you can't have one town voting one thing, one town voting another. Both towns have to agree. That has not been a problem when we do it, because when we work with towns, we go out, like next Monday night, Tuesday night, I'm going up to North Hampton, Adams-Cheshire, we're meeting with the Adams Selectmen to go over that, so they understand it, and they've seen it before, but a public meeting, and it's up or down vote. You can't change anything, and it's what's been approved by the Commissioner. You can do single amendments, but it has to, they all have to be approved, and they both have to say the wording. So that's why you take a look at the wording, and we really spend a lot of time looking at it, does everybody clearly understand what does this mean? And then sometimes I've turned around to some members of the amendment committee or school committee, read that, and now tell me what it means. And if they all say the same thing, then you're okay. And it can be some real problems if you don't. If approved, you sign document, you take the agreement, and you have signatures, and we recommend that the chairman of the school committee signs, the chairman of each of the town, the selectmen of each town signs, and then it's outlined for the Commissioner to sign. Now, if everybody, the school committee wants to sign, or the selectmen want, anybody can sign, but the minimum is to have those three signatures, and then we send it with the certified votes from each town to the department, and the Commissioner signs off. We send about eight copies to them, he signs it, they keep one or two, and then the rest come back in, and you distribute to the towns, so they have a record of it. Interestingly is, when we've asked some towns for their copy of the regional agreement, they don't have one, or they can't find it, and so that's why we give them a clean, a copy with original signatures, by the way, because we asked for those. Commissioner approves the amendment agreement, it's in compliance. One of the things that we have to look at is when we're going through this thing, is look at regional agreements. Chapter 71, 16, 14B outlines what needs to be in the agreement, and we have to make sure we're doing that, and we make sure all sections are up to date and correct where necessary. And as your superintendent said, you gotta deal with laws and regulations to make sure they're correct. Community relations, we talked about a little earlier. You wanna have public forums, you wanna meet with the selectmen, FinCon, school community members, share updates during the meetings, and the community members communicate with other members in the community. You really wanna know. And a lot of times, we see now what happens is, social media, things go out on that and get some input back. Ideally, when you go to town meeting, you want everybody's, all invented, everybody's yet, we don't have a problem, and that they voted to have it done. This is the other significant issues that I really looked at. Here's your assessment process, statutory method, and if you want an alternate method, but you have to define it in the agreement, and very carefully defined. There's a statutory method you define, and then how you use, and you divide it up. Statutory starts, your budget, which includes everything but transportation, debt, and capital, and then you, the process you follow there. Then transportation, it's the transportation special and regular, minus your chapter 71 income that you get. And then how do you wanna assess that out? Use it as per pupil, but you have to define it. Capital and debt, the same thing. How are you going to do it? Some districts do it differently. Most of them use per pupil, but you gotta define what do you mean by per pupil. Are you talking about the kids that are actually in your school, or you're talking your foundation enrollment? And your foundation enrollment that you see that you get includes kids that are in your building, school choice out, what's the other, collab, not collaboratives?
Charter schools.
What?
Charter?
Charter, thank you. I always get that one. Charter schools, and then any special ed transportation, special ed students, either in collaboratives or that you have outside placements, residential, you're responsible, anybody you're responsible. So you have to define, what are you gonna use with that? The other one is school committee membership. I have reviewed, looked at your agreement. You have four from each town, am I correct?
Yes.
Now, what the law says, there are five ways that you can be compliant on one person, one vote. You meet that requirement because you do district-wide elections, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So there's four, then you run. There's a little hooker in there that says, if you do that, and by the way, you have four-year terms, which matches up, but you have your elections in the spring, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. What the law says is that you have to have the elections at the biannual elections every two years in November, because the election for each town has to be on the same day. You can't have one town having the election one day and a week later the next one. And think about that, because if you did, if they're running district-wide, and somebody had a certain number of votes, they run to the other town, get more votes, they could win.
On the same day, though.
Yeah, you're okay. You're on the same day. But what has to happen is, we've got two districts that we're doing this with, so it's not a big problem, is that if you still wanna have it in the annual elections, the town annual elections, you don't have it your own, when the towns have it, am I correct?
Correct.
You then would need special legislation to say that you can do that. And we already have the wording for that. We've got two in the hopper right now that are going through, so that's not gonna be an issue. It just, because the department, when they get it, they want it cleaned up, so it's not a big issue. And if the towns wanna do it, the legislature's been fine with it.
But if we were not amending it, we're still in compliance with what we currently have written, correct?
Yeah.
It's only if we wanna amend that we have to become compliant on...
Well, yes and no. You're in compliant on one person, one vote, okay? That you've got four from each town, and you're running at district-wide elections. That's the major compliance, by the way. The only thing, it says, it adds to it, that you have those, when you're doing district-wide, you do it at the biannual elections. You've chosen to do it there. Right now, you're okay, continue what you're doing. When you amend it, at that point, we'd work with you and get the legislation filed, so it's not a problem. But the department would pick up on that very quickly. So you're legal. I mean, it's the point is, if you weren't doing it, if you had four and four, and you were only being elected by your own members, your own towns, then you're out of whack, because there's a difference in your populations between the two towns. But you're okay, so we don't need to bring anything up, that doesn't happen. But those things get, those are the things that get picked up. But I mean, there's other things that, and the department's been very good working with them these days. Let's get it up, cleaned up, let's take care of it. And the legislators, we filed two, Adams-Cheshire, and we filed down at Spentary's Brookfield, and we're letting those to go through, because they're saying that we just finished with them, and they've had approval. So it's a cleanup, and the department's very, let's get it correctly done, so you won't have a problem with that. The other thing is that, one of the things while we say, dealing with consultants, that we do, we're familiar with the process, multiple laws, regulations, we work closely with the department, help develop the project, and then also, one of the things that the department's been urging us to do, and which we've been doing, is, so we have your agreement that you have in place now. We then go through and have, do a markup, or what's deleted and what's put in, and then say, hit the computer and cleans it all up and have a clean one. Then we do a fourth one, which is, just reorders them to make sense, and we give you the order that we put them in. Generally, you'll start with the type of region and the name, and then you go into the school committee, and then we go down the line, and then you might do a budget, and then you do assessment, and the other things there, but in order, a different order that makes sense. You can't do an assessment without doing your budget. And so someone's saying, "This is kinda mixed up." And I think, Sarah, you and I were talking a little bit about it, if you take a look at the order. So that's where you wanna make sure that we do the order. So that's how we get it, and when we reorder, we don't change any of the wording, we do that. If you change, if you reordered and then did a markup, it shows that you've made all these changes when you really haven't. And the nice thing about it is, we take that, and then we do a clean copy, and then we tell them to compare the two, and it tells us, I mean, the computer will tell us what we're deleting, what we added. It makes life a lot easier. But again, they absolutely have to see that legal requires that, they will not go free till they see, they're not gonna go take your original and your clean and figure that out. They wanna know, "What did you take out? What did you add with that one?" So again, that we can reorder that one, so that one. One of the things is that an amendment process requires careful thought. Need to develop a significant community relations program. Length of time, it can depend on how you do it. We just finished with Spentary's Brookfield. We started in October, and we just received approval last month from the department, and they're going to the annual town meetings for approval. I usually say it takes up to a year to get it. If you can start in July, August, September, you can have it available for the next annual town meetings if you want, or special, depends what you wanna do. A lot of times, it depends how jammed up your annual meetings are, and sometimes people wanna have it special, so it depends what you wanna do. I don't know, sometimes we've gone in the fall for a special town meeting, and so they can have that. So again, you can do that. And recommendations of DSE and legal assistance. Who do you have for legal counsel?
Mike Long.
Mike Long? Yes, I know Mike, we work with him. So one of the things that we do is, we're going through this, we work not only with your local legal aid person, we also work with the department, and then at one point, then it also then goes to the both of the lawyers, legal counsel for each of the towns, so all three are seeing what's going on. So when you get to town meeting, a lot of times, someone will raise their hand and say, "Did legal counsel review this?" And the answer is, "Yes." "Did legal counsel agree?" "Yes." If legal counsel says, "No, I didn't review it, and I didn't agree to it," guess what? I think most people will go, "No, we're not gonna pass it." So that's why we go through that process and to take care of that. So that's what we recommend to do that one, and so we make sure everyone is doing that one. So I'd be glad to answer any particular questions. I'm trying to watch your time, so you can get through, but it's important as a process. I have to tell you, if you go looking in the Department of Education someplace, you're not gonna find a process. What they do is, in your regional agreement, always says you do an amendment, and you send it out, but it doesn't say the process. We have developed a process, and it was successful, and I said, "We've worked on 12 regional agreements, and they've been passed, and we do a pretty good job with that." So again, we know what they, dealing all the different parts of it, and we put PowerPoints together. One of the things that we take is, one document is we take and list all the changes that we have, that people can give, and then we do a PowerPoint to go over, so everybody can clearly understand that in doing that, and make sure that everybody has the documents that they need in order to make an informed decision. A lot of it depends, what are the communities, what issues you're facing, what do you wanna do, if there's issues that you wanna make. But also, you wanna make sure it's up to date, it's legal and it's operating, so everybody knows what, how you're supposed to do. So you have a new superintendent coming in, business manager came in this year, I mean, so they have a document they gotta deal with, because whenever we, and they came to our Mars, we have an orientation program that we ran in September, and they both came, both of you were there, right? Yeah. And one of the things we tell them, "Take a look at your regional agreement, then you gotta look at the regular laws that pertain to regions, and then your policies, school committee policies, and so forth." So those are important documents, so. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, if you have them.
Tell us a little bit about the process for requesting your service. So if we decide to go in that direction, the process for requesting your services, the somewhat cost of that?
What we recommend is that you put out a request for proposal, that you put it out and follow bid laws, request for proposals. I can, we have one that was, actually McCann developed it, we can give you a copy of that, and then we can respond to that, what you do for that. We charge, right now, it would be $90 an hour for our services to do that, and we do that, plus transportation, we travel to that. And it varies in the price depending how much we do. You would need to provide someone to take minutes, but we would do the agenda, because we know what needs to be on, we send it down to, who's the executive secretary here?
Yeah.
What? We would send to that person, and through Jason, through the superintendent, to post the meetings, so we follow all of that. that, plus transportation, we travel to that. And it varies in the price, depending how much we do, you would need to provide someone to take minutes, but we would do the agenda, because we know what needs to be on, we send it down to, who's, your executive secretary here?
Yeah.
What? We would send to that person, and through Jason, through the superintendent, to post the meetings, so we follow all of that. And there's usually two people that are assigned to that. I have two people that most likely will be the key workers, I'll be also involved, because I supervise with that. They're both experienced doing that. I always have two, because you never know what can happen, and we do that. So it works out, I think, we, very, we can be anywhere from 10 to 15,000, depending how many meetings you want us to do, and how much further to go, but we've had very successful getting things through. And again, it's, it's that we've dealt with people, and we, but both of us, all of us have been dealing with school committees and FinComs and town meetings, so we've been there all the time.
I have a question. Is it, so is it $90 per hour in transportation? You said two people, is it?
No, it's $90 per consultant, on working, yes.
But you, you would send two?
We have two going on it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And only because the amount of work that we do, and we're working together, and sometimes maybe only one will show up, depending what's going on, it varies. And I, right now, I'm supposed to have another person with me tonight to come down, and he was unfortunately sick, so that's why we always have two involved. And again, I can give you some references, if your superintendent like to call, with Adams-Cheshire, and most recently, we've worked with Paul Hawey, I think you might know him. He's at, right now, at Spentary's Brookfield, we're working with them, and some other names, if you want, we can provide those to you, that we work together.
Is there any type of guarantee associated to hiring you? So I know you said that you've worked with 12 districts, were you saying 12 were successful in town approvals? Or you've worked with 12 to?
We've worked on 12, and probably, probably eight or nine of them were successful, but that's, certain part of when it gets to a town meeting, and the political aspect gets out of our control.
Sure.
We put everything together, and we will spend, if we agree to a certain number that we're going to provide you, 10, 12, whatever that number is, we'll stay with you and get that done, and try as we can. But again, this political aspect, that we have no control, and you don't have control, that all of a sudden it gets to a town meeting, and people aren't going to agree. But we stay with you, and successful, we get now with the others, these other two are going forward, and we don't expect any problems. But we've had, we've had a community relations program, and so they all know.
So, once we hit our, say we want it on our annual next year, and let's say it doesn't pass, and one town passes in another, do we own all of the documents that have been prepared for us?
They're all yours.
With all the correct legal?
They're all yours, they're all yours. We prepare and give you stuff, everything's yours. In fact, what we, one of the things that we insist on, that stuff that we do, somebody in superintendent Falco's office, Dr. Falco's going to be on that computer, we'll have copies, but we insist that you have everything there, because it's yours, we're developing it for you. So, and again, those documents would be there, and we, and we, we're working with a, not with a region right now, and we're going over what we've agreed to, but we feel obligated, we want to help them get through things. So we won't leave you, we'll stay with you, so I promise you that. That's what we did, that's why we started, because people, regions were asking Mars that we dedicate to regional school districts, and would we work with them, and that's what we do. And all of us have been through this, I mean, we've done this, and I, where I was in Narragansett, Templeton, Phillipsden, we got a regional agreement through and passed, took me two years, but I got it done.
May I ask what Spencer is, what are they amending?
Their, their whole, their agreement, they're amending the whole agreement and reordering it.
Are they bringing elementary schools together?
They are, they are, they are already pre-K-12 district.
So...
Are they combining other towns?
What are they amending, what is?
Their agreement was out of whack, just like yours is, didn't have stuff in it, they hadn't done anything for 10 to 12 years to it. So they didn't, it wasn't updated correctly, so that's why we updated, which you have the issue.
So essentially, they're, so out of the 12 districts that you've worked with, has it been just correcting language, or is it bringing, bringing agreements together? Like, we're trying to get our elementary schools to be regionalized, whereas right now, it just starts at middle school.
Well, you're a K-
So we're, we're a K-12.
Right.
But our agreement says that the individuals from the individual towns up to grade five will be educated in the school in their town.
Right, yeah.
And there are some of, some groups that would like to see that change as part of the process, that when we say regional, we mean?
Whole thing.
Whole thing.
That's not, that's not an uncommon thing we've seen in agreements, it says, and it's a throwback, because remember now, in the 70s and 80s, they were forming secondary regions, because towns could not have four to middle or high school, so they formed seven through 12, or six through 12.
Which is how we started.
Which is how we started.
Yeah, and that, and the elementary. Then, but then they had three superintendents, three school committees, three of everything.
Which is how we started.
And then they decided to go pre-K-12. But at that point, citizens wanted to have a guarantee that their children would be educated in their town. Things have changed a lot, saying sometimes that works well, and sometimes it doesn't. Again, so you have to take a look at that, what kind of things do you want to make adjustments? I had a situation where, that we had that, was in Narragansett, said that, but by seventh, eighth, 12th, the school committee, we can make some moves. And what happened to me one year, in Templeton, in kindergarten class, I had 35 kids, and I had no other room, but Phillipsden, and these, these kids all lived on that Phillipsden border of Templeton, I could take 10 over to Phillipsden, and they would wind up with a 20 class, and the parents said, that's great, because they were in a smaller class, so they went over to Phillipsden. What was the big deal? Better education. But, it kind of broke through, saying, go where the best education for the kids are, do you want your kids in a 35 classroom, or you want your kids in a 20? And they agreed that was a 20. So, you have to set up some things. Also, special education, you've got to be for special education programs, you're not going to run duplicate programs, you're going to, because there's low incidents that you have, run them in one. The other issue that comes up, I don't know if you've said it here, but I had issues of bullying, and I had to move some kids because of issues that took place like that. And it was a better, once I moved the kid to another location, all those problems stopped. So you have to have, the superintendent has their authority to make some of these changes, people have to understand, what's best for kids, and that you have to do. There are other districts that we've talked with, that are very adamant they want to have them in there, and you're trying to convince them, what's the best thing to do, and then there's some controls. A lot of them are concerned, because of declining enrollments these days, if you're going to close my elementary school and move them to the other one. That's some things that come across. So you try to find out, what's the issues, and what are they trying to do? But you still have one budget that you have, that you allocate, obviously, to the schools that have, take that. But, again, this is part of your, your community program, reaching out and saying, what's the best thing to have, and what's the best thing that we can do? The other thing we developed, we were working up in Pioneer District, and we put in there the concerning about closing of a school, we put in a process that, if you're going to close a school, there's going to be a year process in which you have to do it, and why. Declining enrollments, or whatever it happens, you have, there's a process you want to put in, so people feel protected, that the school's not going to, it's going to get closed, there's going to be a reason, everybody's going to go through a deal, a process.
I think, I think when we tried to do this on our own, in our communities, we ran into more questions of management, you know, how are they going to be bussed, and who's going to, what grade is going to be in which building, and what, and, and from my perspective, and going through this process as a document, and a whole governance document, it's not a management document, it's a governance document.
But they still will have those questions, so our communities are still going to have those major questions.
Sure.
Especially if they're, you know, younger children, they want to know where the busing, how long the busing is. I mean, those are, that's the reality of the population in our town, is that's what's meaningful to them, and this is the document that we need, so I think there's going to be a little bit of a combination of.
But you're, you're absolutely correct, Mancie, that it's a, it's a, it's a governing document, where your superintendent and you are the managers of that, so you've got to be careful what you put in, it ties you. However, you could say, if they want to say they want to have their children educated in their, in their own schools, except for the following issues that develop, so what is best for kids? That's what you can put in there, what's the best for kids, and also financially as well. And I don't know if you have some issues on special ed or whatever, but we put that in standard agreements that we're dealing with now, that special ed, that the program, they can be assigned to whatever, where the program is. Low incidence, if you have 10 kids, you're not going to run two, five programs and have multiple teachers, multiple, gets expensive, but where you do that. And most parents want their kids to go to the best program and have the best education they can get. Again, I understand that, I'm familiar with it, I have visited down here over the years when I was executive director, so you have prior superintendents, so I've visited them and talked with them, so I'm very familiar with some of the issues. So, not blind, I follow regional schools, we have 80 of them, and I've followed them over the years.
You do. We have spoken.
So, just to get back to my, so in those 12 districts, have you, has it been more than language? Has it been, have you been successful in bringing the towns together to?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we've been, we've been working with a district, six towns in the region, and looking together, and bringing them together, and working with them to get them sitting down, there was a whole lot, I don't want to go into too much about it, but they were working difficulties, and we came in, they asked us to come in, and we did a study, and then they hired us to work with them to facilitate the issues that are going on, and we've had an agreement that, a new agreement, amended agreement, that they're happy with so far, and it's going through. Again, it becomes certain political things we can't control, but here's what the document, everybody, at least on the amendment committee agrees, this is how we want to go. When it goes to town meetings, you just never know, and that's why we say, community relations programs, so everybody knows and understands it, so that, what would you object to? I worked with Somerset-Berkley, when they formed their region, a secondary region, nine through 12, as, from Mars, and then I was their interim superintendent when they formed it. And one, going through the process on the regional agreement, this is a brand-new regional agreement, we went through it, we went out to each of the, out to the communities, at least, at least six different presentations throughout the community, found out there were some objections to it. We went back together, worked out those objections, and we went out again. And at that point, most of the communities, they said, okay. Then we went out before town meeting, before that, and then we got to town meeting, it was overwhelming vote. Now, they had an impetus that they wanted, the MS School Building Authority said, if you regionalize nine through 12, we will put you in the list to get a new high school, which they did. And, but again, again, we went out and made sure of all the communities, what they, what were the objections in, and then with that. So, we worked, we worked very hard trying to get that through, and we did, so.
I have one more question. So we approved a group of stakeholders with a chair and a vice chair, and I'm just wondering what their role would be in this, if we were to?
So what would happen is, if we, if you hired us, what would happen is, we would, number one is, we would take what you ask your superintendent to provide us, what do you say is, and you give me a copy, now what's your agreement? We call the Department of Education, what do you have on file? Get those documents, then we call the committee together, and saying, okay, here's where we are, here's what you say to us, what it is. And then they, they then start the process, okay, we need to get this thing to its updated agreement, what do you want? If there's any changes, I'm not sure, I have to, we haven't asked that question. And then they would go through each section as we go through, updating it to follow correctly, and we have a, from the department, we have a checkoff list that we provide them, we go through it step by step. There's things in there that you might not need to take out, they're historical things that happened in 1983, and it talks about that, at that point, that the school committee will take over jurisdiction, well, you already have it, so you take those things out. You have a whole lot of things in there about the election, well, I assume that you do the elections through your members, through your town governments, so some of that can leave, you can, you can leave something in that you could have district-wide elections if you wanted to, but pretty much follow that, and I think it's, some of it said, if you, you're going to, say you're from Blackstone, that you dredged in Blackstone, Blackstone sends over to Millville, that they're on the ballot, or something like that, how they work together, and then they, and then the votes are done. So, again, some of that stuff you can delete, it's historical, you keep the documents, historical documents, but the new agreement, you don't need to put it in, because it has no relevance to what's today, your pre-K-12. Yes, you had to, you talked about, about the fact of where the kids are going to go, and what's going to happen, that you have to work out and explain to people, what's the best things to happen, and I'm not sure if there's enrollment issues, or program, whatever, and how, and how the superintendent and the principals can be involved, so if they, what they can do is the best things for kids. If they want to move a kid in transportation, I had a parent that wanted to, we wanted to move this kid, and they transported, they, it was important for that, and I had the right to do that, as superintendent, and said you could do that. But again, you've got to be careful you don't hogtie yourselves in, in your agreement, and remember, it's, it's how you're operating, but not the management, the day-to-day operations of your district.
So the, so the purpose of that particular group would be to review the documents?
Review and come up with a amended agreement, that, and then, as we're going through the process, they come back to the school committee, say, okay, we've worked on sections 1, 2, 3, and I'd like to, I need some feedback from you, school committee, and I'm going to take it back to this amendment committee. Meanwhile, your selectmen and FinCom are giving you recommendations, insist in large, so that, okay, hopefully that at that point, everybody will have an agreement, this is what we want to do. Then you get through it, and then you find out where the hotspots might be, and then you start working on those.
But you, but you would run the community outreach?
Oh yeah, oh yeah, we'd work with you on that, yeah. Well, we would go do the presentations and doing that, and say, here's what they, what they show, what it is. People can get mad at us if they want, that's okay.
That's what I was making sure.
Protect your superintendent.
Who's going to get mad?
But I have to tell you, one of the districts we're working with, and we attended some meetings, and they were just awful, what people were doing, and then they hired us to come in, and we chaired the meetings, and we did the agendas, and it all changed, and we were able to calm things down and work together, and they came across.
You're an outside, hard party, yeah. So, there's nobody, you know.
But also, realize, we've been experienced, I mean, I spent, I went in, I was teaching for 10 years, and then I went in to be vice principal, then I went into, I was in Vermont, and went into a supervisory union for four years, then I was in Norwood for 15 years, and so, and then I Narragansett for nine years, so I mean, so I know how towns operate, how districts operate, I've dealt with, you know, FinComs, Selectmen, we've dealt with them all. So we understand some of that, and that we're a neutral party, and all we're trying to do is help you through that process, and saying, we keep asking, what do you want to see, what do you want? Now, there are legal requirements that you have to do, and, and the department won't accept it, now, if you don't do it this way, legally. They also suggest is, what do you really want to do? What do you really want your district to be like? And again, also, we come up with, one of the things that, in one of the agreements that they wanted to put in, that, in a region, that if the elementary schools were owned by the town, so they, I assume that that happens here, they own their, they own their buildings?
Yes.
And so, that has to be in agreement, at least, and then also, if there's going to be certain repairs, and if it's a day-to-day repair, fix a toilet or something else, that the district would pay for, but if it's over X number of dollars, theirs was 10, anything over $10,000, would be responsible to the town. And then they came up with, they're saying, okay, if something happens in the middle of the year, you send to the towns, it's a $15,000 responsibility in the town, we haven't got the money, we're not going to do it. And that's where we ended, and the, and the department said, well, maybe you might want to put something in that says, if they refuse, but it's a, it's a safety issue for kids, that the, the school committee, the region, can really fix it no matter what, and what's important for kids. So they've pointed out those things to us, saying, this maybe you want to put in, because then, then the town can't complain, you can't pay for it, we're going to pay for it, because it's a problem, you have mold, mildew, whatever you got, we're going to take care of it, period. So, again, that was something that we didn't think of, and they said to put in.
Well, I had a minute, sorry.
I mean.
We had some old last summer.
Sorry, I didn't mean to bring that up. But again, again, this is where the fact is, which you want to make sure that you, as a school committee and your superintendent, have the right to take care of what's best for kids at the time, so that, you know, you're not hamstringing yourself.
We, we have some members of the, who have been appointed to the committee, do you all, does anybody have any questions as you're listening? Mary, way in the back there, anybody?
Always funny when you see who's behind you. Be glad to.
How big are the committees usually, that you've worked with?
Anywhere from 10 to 15.
Okay, so we're, we're right in.
And generally, what we do is, try to meet at beginning, minimum once a month, and then as we get going, twice a month, offset with your school committee, other meetings that you have, and try to choose a date and time, I'm making this up, third Tuesday, whatever it is in the month, and then maybe the, the third and fourth, as we get closer to what we need to do. And Summers, and Spentary's Brookfield, they, they wanted to go, we were meeting every two weeks for, for three months, because they wanted to get through, they want to go, which they are now, and the department has approved their agreement, and they're going to the annual meetings this spring. So they wanted, they moved, it depends how fast they want to move.
Would you set that right off the get-go, like, how fast do you want to have this?
Yeah, we, how fast do you want to, basically, we say, when did you, when do you want to take this to the town, to town meeting? Do you want, do you want to look, do you want to look at, I'm making this up, say, next year, and you want to look at, that's just 20, so you want to look at the 1920, so you want to look at, say, September 20. So you spend all next year going through it, but you want to go in the fall, so we talk in education, backward planning. So then you say, okay, want to go, and then we hit the key dates that you got to go with.
Okay.
And then till we know. So we say to people, if you want to meet that, we got to go to the Selectmen by this date, we got to go to the FinComs, we got to go to the public meetings. Also, suggest sometimes you go to the schools for the PTOs, and do a presentation with them. So, I mean, it depends what you want, it depends what you see happening, and then, and then seek out people that have voiced concerns, and you try to bring them into the tent with you, and bring them in so they all can agree, what's the best thing you want to do? I got to tell you, right now, I'm talking to districts, it's, it's pretty tough out there, money-wise, and everything that's going on, it's not easy. You think you might have some issues, you head west, they've got really, really enrollment issues and money issues, so, and trying to figure out what they're going to do. So we got to come together.
And that's it, we have to come together for what's best for the, for the students, it's not about us, it's about what they need to be successful. Anyone else up here? Okay, well.
The good news for you, you're, and I looked at your agreement, you're going to, it's not going to be that, things that you need to have corrected are easy enough, the other pieces that you're going to have to figure out that are between the towns, that's the other, another issue. And I assure, Erin, I would assure you that we stay with you, we don't quit on it, we stay. I have enough people that we work with, you know, to make sure that we go. And we also have people that, depending what we do, some of your people, we use your secretary on some of the agreement stuff, or whatever, I have people, I have somebody that can take a mess of an agreement and clean it all up.
That's great.
So again, we, whatever we need to do, we can do.
So, I'm sorry, speaking, now that you say that. So the first step, you're, we would take what Desi has as their, as their final approved agreement. We would find what we think is our final agreement, and I think we've already discovered that we might not be on the same, quite on the same page. And so, then we get Desi's version updated with what we think, and then get that approved before you do this round?
No, you don't need, that's going backwards, and frankly, the department does, why would they want to go through this thing twice?
Right.
You know, so you take a look at, you take a look at what you say, what they say, and then we put it together, what you've actually passed.
Yeah.
And we then, I send that into Christine Lynch and say, here's what they've done. She'll say, okay, let's start from there, is that point, okay?
So is Christine Lynch at Desi?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I just said, right? So they have done, they have done that, they have pulled what they have, which does not match what we have, which we know. But they also acknowledge that they have amendments that we had sent in, not approved by the commissioner.
Right.
So they have extra, so.
So what we, and I've had, I did, that's what we had happened. So what you're, simply saying, here's your, whatever, whichever one you want to take, put it together, saying, here's what we wanted to have, here's what we want to start with, and then that's what they're going to approve when you make the other changes with that. So they're being cooperative about it, they're not going to make you go backwards, they want to go forward, and they don't need to go back, and why would you have a double approval? They don't want to do that. What, I'm sorry?
But it's submitted to them, they don't necessarily approve it, but that's the starting point where you pull those pieces together.
And I did that, I've done that with two districts already, and that was fine with them.
Okay.
And again, then they saw, this is what the intent was to be put in. Now, I have to tell you, only in the last 10 to 15, 10 years, have they been checking this and making the commissioner approvals and all that. They haven't been as diligent, maybe both the towns, and they have been as diligent as they should be to follow up. So again, what happens is some amendments got sent in, but then they just sat there and nobody looked at the file.
So it's possible we did send our?
But we did send, they have some.
It's possible it's just not.
But see, the problem is, if you could send the amendment, but did you send the votes?
The whole document, see, that's it.
It's the whole document, they're not, right now, and I agree with them, and what they do is, if you want to amend a section, well, you show where you're going to amend that, and that becomes a brand-new document. Some districts, what they did is, they have the original, they just keep attaching these amendments. Well, you try to read through them, it's a mess, what really is in effect? And so that's why they want a clean copy, clean it up, and they'll do that. And we've done, we're doing that now, so.
And that's truly what we, I mean, the one we have even says, you know, we need to add this on the next section of the next section, you know, it's like notes, it's not.
Interestingly, as I went in, doing, I used to, I was collecting them, and I went in and I found one that I had on my file, and it said, "Chapter 39, School District Regional", and it talked about all the different things that you were putting in and adopted when.
Correct.
So I've got that copy, and then the superintendent sent me what you think is your copy. But our job, our job would be to work with the department and not bother you, we will come up with, what is the, where's the starting point that everybody says, and then we're going to move forward.
So you create that original red line of what Desi has and everything else?
Right, we're going to create, not a red line, we're going to create a clean, what you say, what you say you should have, what they have, and make it a clean copy, a starting point. Because it's stuff that you want in there, that you voted in previously, but you're going to put it in. And again, then we start with that, and then the end result is, when you come up with, that's what they're going to agree to when you finish at the end.
Right.
With that, but what we show them, what were the changes were. And it's, this is not unusual, this has happened in several districts we've worked with, and we had to clean it up. And so, don't worry about it, it's not going to be a problem.
I guess, I, I'm just trying to, you're saying.
Our current operating agreement.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Then we do the red line.
Right.
Then the reordering.
Right.
And then everyone votes it through.
Well, what we'll have, what we're going to do is, we're going to, we would take, your, what you say you have, the department, you say, and sometimes I go in and see them, okay, fine, this is what everybody wanted to have, you want to say, so let's, this is the starting point, okay?
Correct.
To having. And then we, then we'll go through with your committee, the amendment committee, and then things you delete will red line up, blue line in, and then we, then we hit the button and it cleans it up, and then we then say, okay, we, okay, and then we'll do a reorder agreement with, just reorder, no, we have to go through and make sure, because there's some references to other sections, we clean that up. After we do that, then we take, and we come up with a document saying, what was changed? We're trying to make it real simple, so people, what was changed, what was taken out by sections, but we're dealing with the non-reordered one for that, otherwise it gets confusing. And then we say, okay, then we reorder this, so it makes more sense.
Right.
And then we do a PowerPoint at a meeting, some, we've done it both ways. Some districts have liked, they wanted to just go through that, others want to have a visual of what we changed, and so you can see that. So, and.
Go ahead.
I do have a question. So obviously, there's a lot of changes that need to be done for the good, but the big change is regionalizing the elementary. So what would happen if they agreed, because earlier you stated, they have to agree to everything, or nothing's binding. So we do some things to clean it up, but the vote comes down to, they don't want the two schools to be together. Does that mean all of the work with the stuff that legally should be fixed can't be kept?
So that was my question of the, can you do, you know, amendment number one, amendment number two?
No. It's a clean document.
It's a document, you're voting on the document.
That's what scares me, is we're paying all this money for great things to make it legal.
So, so this is why Jane said in the original meeting that we had, that first, we needed to clean up the document and get a document that we do all agree on, that's in the right order, that's, that, and get that approved from our towns, and then in a phase two, try to alter things that would make.
Could we do that in one meeting? Do we approve?
Yeah, that's what, can we vote on one thing and then have the second amendment, the big amendment? Because we all know it's going to be a big change for this town.
Do we bring both?
Well, there is, this will be interesting, challenging. When you said about the two schools combined, you are a K-12 region.
Right.
One thing that you've decided, and your agreement says that your kids from, children from Melville, in Melville for K-6, I think.
K through five.
K-5, and Blackstone K-5. You're still, you're just saying where they're going to go to school. You're still, you're assessing the towns for their K-12 district, so that's not changing. It's the fact is, what can you do and how you're going to?
We don't want to cross the bus over the line, if they're in fifth grade or below.
But that's what it is now, we want to cross the bus over the line.
So that's, so what you can do is, you go through your agreement and get everything to agree to, and then you start hammering at that one, what do you want to do, and try to figure that out before you go. Because the department says, you know, they get very concerned about one section at a time, when it's really the whole thing, you've got to be in compliance that you're doing. And again, that's what they would do. Now, again, I think what you're going to find out is that if the towns have voted, we're going to see what you, what you say it is, and what the town, DSC says, and put that document together and say, okay, this is what we all agree, that stuff got in, but the commissioner didn't sign, but this is what we want, okay, that's where we're going. And I don't think you're changing the issue of K-5, that's not changing. Now, okay, now what are we going to go from there? And that's where you take a community relations program, and you try sometimes to hit some of the things that are not controversial, and get through those, and then you go to the controversial issues. So that's what you want to try to do, and say, what's the best thing for kids? And also, what's going to be financially for your towns? I mean, what can they afford, what's, how are you spending the dollars? You're spending it the best way possible.
So currently, when we do the budget, we go to the first, it's usually, Melville is usually first. And so we do a budget, and if they don't agree to a number, they agree to a lower number, then, then we would typically bring that number over to Blackstone and say, this is what was agreed here, do you guys agree? So you're saying we can't do that. If Melville voted Section 5 of the agreement that we formed out, tried to amend it on the floor, then we couldn't bring that amended version over to Blackstone?
Well, the problem would be, the answer is, yeah, you could try that, but now, when you do that, you don't have an agreement that's been approved by the department. Remember, we said, before you vote to the towns, you're going to get a preliminary approval from the department, saying, if the towns vote this, the commissioner will sign it.
But the commissioner has approved everything.
Right.
And so he's saying, if we take one out, then it might mess up something else.
But anyway, that's where it takes education now. One of the, one of the things you just said about your budget, you go over to the towns, the towns are voting on the assessment, they don't vote on your budget. You vote the budget by a two-thirds vote to certify it, and then it filters into your assessment process that Matthew does, your business manager, and that's what they're voting on. So how much money are they going to, you're going to assess them, what's, they're going to have to pay? And so that's where you say, Melville says, okay, we're going to pay this, and you go back and figure, if you had to reduce that, how does that affect Blackstone? I mean, that's a different, that has nothing to do with updating the regional agreement, that's your budget.
Well, no, but I'm just saying that your point was that if one town doesn't agree, you can't even basically bring it to the other town, because it doesn't matter, if they take that section out.
I'm talking about the agreement only, wording of the agreement.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So if Section 5 wording of the agreement was what one town had an issue with, say, we went to Black, it doesn't matter which way, but if they didn't, if they amended it on the floor and said, we agree with all of this agreement that's already been approved by the commissioner, except Section 5, we don't like Section 5, we want to take that out. My question was, could we then take the agreement without Section 5, because it's already been approved here, here to get approved?
So then, the answer is yes, you could do that. Then you're going to send it back into the department for their approval, and hoping they'll say, okay, with this change, and again, starting that approval process, and how does it affect everything else?
Yeah.
Yes, the answer is, if you were dealing with the agreement, yeah, you could do that. They didn't like some wording, but what you're trying to do is, before you do that, now.
I get it, we want the best agreed-upon agreement we can go with to start, but.
But even then, what you can.
Sometimes town floor gets a little crazy.
What you can do, again, depending on it, if you wanted to, you could do, you could, you had control on it, you could go to a special or a town meeting or something and say, here's, here's what we're looking at, do you have a real problem with this or not? Before, you know, and we're not asking, we're just saying, here's the sections, and you just have a particular one, here's where we're going, people could agree to that, so you get people together. And then you get the other town, then you could get final approval if you wanted. That's a tough step, but if you had a problem that you think the towns are going to get our town, then make another steps with them. Again, it's how many times you're going to go back and get the department to approve, and they get a little concerned, how many times are they going to do that, so.
Sure. Mary, you move forward, so I'm sure you got a question.
So you brought up combining the elementary schools, and we brought up the regional agreement. I feel they're two different things, eventually they'll join, I think that's a programming issue, and it would need to be reviewed as a programming function, maybe not?
Well, we can't, we can't review it as a program.
It's the great debate. It truly is the great debate, because, because there are those of the mindset who believe that that piece of the document, that those, it's essentially three lines, that those three lines are essentially dictate the administration of students in the, in the district. And yet, they are part of the agreement currently. So to remove them, or change them, or amend them, is a process of amending the agreement. So it may be managerial, but it's in the document, so.
I think it's managerial, but if it showed a program advantage to the students, I think it would. And it could also address all the other questions that keep coming up about, we've got space at the high school, we've got basic, you know, high-level program, I think would make it easier to sell this.
Correct. Right. But I think we have to have that community relations piece that has that all.
I did have a question, actually, regarding that, because I know I brought it up, because essentially, a while back, Erin and I were on the regional agreement committee, and what guided our instruction was the concerns of the taxpayers and the stakeholders. And a lot of those concerns were, in reality, they were managerial. And but, but that's what hit home to the, to the people that sent their kids to school. So in order to pass the document, we needed to have those things in place. So I think that drove, you know, the committee's work. Unfortunately, you know, it was kind of the cart before the horse, you know, in listening, in listening right now, but I do still think that those things need to be in place in order to sell something like this. And I'm wondering, you know, when you go to the towns and, you know, you do the community outreach, you know, I believe it's, I'm assuming it's the superintendent, because it's managerial and it's things like that, and what's the best interest of the kids is going to go to, you know, our superintendent. Do you have superintendents that go with you and actually share out a rollout of, you know, the questions that came up with our parents, like, you know, busing and where the school is?
What does this look like?
You know, because it is essentially the superintendent's job to do something like that. I don't think, you know, it was really our, our responsibility, but it led to our responsibility, because that was guiding our push, was the people that were in that particular, you know, on the committee. So I guess, but that was my question, is, you know, you bring the community outreach and you talk about the document, but as well as that, do you have, you know, that other piece coming with you?
What we do is, we have the superintendent, business manager, maybe the chair of the committee come, and if they ask particular questions about certain things, we would say to the superintendent, how could you please answer that particular question?
Right, but there's a plan.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah. This is what we want to do as a district.
And this is how it would serve the students.
This is what we need this document to say, so that we can do this.
Right.
Right. Like, is that the approach that we take at these communities? Okay.
What do you want to see, what's going, and I keep saying, what's best for the education of the children that the communities can afford? And the other thing I want to say is, you need, as a school committee, you need to be careful what kind of position you put your superintendent in between two towns. It's not fair to him to be, you deal with the facts, they can get mad at us, what we think, but again, your superintendent, you want to be careful what kind of, whatever you want to get involved with, that you want to be careful with that. And I've seen that where superintendents have gotten in the middle of a fight, and it's caused a lot of their problems later on, as they're trying to govern and manage the school district.
Where I think conversely, when the community doesn't trust the managerial style of the superintendent, when, when the, the last time we went around, busing was a big issue, where a kindergartner was going to be on the bus for an hour. I could get to Newport faster than my kid could get to Melville, and that was a true concern. It truly happened. And so, at that point, when we, to use Jason's words, didn't dig into the weeds on that, on the facts of what would happen, because the bus company wasn't in on everything and whatever, but they, the townspeople wouldn't affirm that broad language to allow the superintendent to be the superintendent, because they didn't trust the process, or the person, whichever, you know.
One of the things you've got to say.
So it's a hard line.
Yeah, I just, one of the things you can say, you cannot anticipate everything that's going to happen. Try to give broad.
Sure.
Things that you're going to do. Like, I had the situation, if I had to move students, I had to go to the school committee and get a seventh eighth vote to agree to that. But it was an agreement that we could do that, it was in the best interest of the kids. When it came to special ed, the school committee had no say, because that's a requirement of IEPs, and that we took care of that, for doing that one. Also, I talked about the bullying, when that happened, we were, I had complete authority to take care of what was that. Other things, I'm moving whole amounts of kids, whatever, then I had to go back to the committee. But you've got to have exceptions in there, in trying to do what's best, because you just, you cannot guarantee what's going to happen. And you can't put everything in an agreement, and you have to leave a lot of it's going to be as it comes up, and then you set things through policy with that. And if people aren't happy with your policies, when you run for election, they can vote somebody else in. So, again, that's how the collective bargaining process, that's how the electoral process happens, so. You also have in here, which is interesting, recall language, which we haven't seen in too many agreements, so, a lot of them don't have that, so, again, it's interesting. It's interesting how the different agreements that we've looked over over the years, similar things, and then other little bits come in, and a lot of that's a reaction or something that's happened, so they want to put that in the agreement. So try to think forward, really, don't, don't put hamstring yourself. Well, I hope I've been helpful tonight.
Yes, very much so, thank you.
And I am, I am very familiar, you know, what's happened, and so, not blind about it. So as I said, you're not the only region with types of issues that come up, and again, I think you've got, and I think very, Tammy, if you want my, say, Tammy, your point of having trust in a superintendent, trust in the administration, trust in new people is absolutely imperative. If they trust you, then they'll go through with that, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll see you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be in touch with you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
So as a general response, does anybody have any general reaction to that, or this direction, or?
Well, I wasn't trying to be funny when I asked about the guarantee, because I, sitting here, through the presentation, I started, it was bringing back a lot of superintendent search presentations, and so I guess my first question is, are there, other, does NASDAQ do this? Does, you know, is this the only one that, he said something about putting it up to Does, you know, is this the only one that, he said something about putting it up to bid, so.
Right.
I think because of the...
Is there any?
I think, I think that came up in the phone call.
Yeah.
They're the only group, really.
Because I believe it was that, it is NASDAQ that offers that guarantee on the superintendent search. If you don't find one, you're not done. You're paying that large amount of money, and you're getting, you're going to have your end goal. So, I wasn't trying to be sarcastic, I was really just trying to see where we stood.
No, I think that's common.
I definitely went, I definitely went from feeling like, oh god, that's a lot of money, to we would, the return on that money would be...
Yeah. And we would have the documents. So say we go forward with the whole vote, vote up, it's an up-down vote on this document, and for some reason, it doesn't pass in one of the towns. We can split it apart ourselves and still come back at another meeting and get the language changed, so that we can regroup and attempt again. But I mean, I still think that the urgent piece, while the legal part obviously is important, the urgent piece that actually affects how we educate our kids are those three lines.
And I, I mean, I know what you're saying about, well, can't we still move it forward? I kind of like the all or nothing, because we're fixing everything at once, and getting those three lines.
But, but those three lines will, if anything were to hold up the process, okay? It will be those, whatever comes of those three lines. And so, our goal is to make sure we're legally in compliance with things. I mean, just like our policy, and we wanted to make sure we were following the law, and we updated all these policies, and then, and then we tweaked some policies after the fact. So, in this case, if we could, if one town, whichever town it is that votes first, didn't approve whatever is attached to those three lines, but they approved everything else to get us in compliance, and our order is right, and all those things, there's value in that piece of it to push that to the next town, get it approved. We got some of our money's worth. We didn't maybe reach our final ultimate goal of those three lines, but we got something, and we're much further ahead than we are right now with bits and pieces of who knows what has been approved. So, that was my point. And, I mean, I think in my, if the, if the legal part of the document is already approved by the commissioner, I can't imagine that if we take out the part that deals with the K through five, that it would, he wouldn't approve the legal part. So I, so I, again, I think, is it ideal to resubmit or whatever? No, but at the end of the day, it gets us something for the money, if we're paying the money, and we've moved the district regional agreement ahead 15 years solidly.
And something that people can understand and read, and, you know, and know how they amended, how they amended in the first, you know, in the first place, or how they, you know, did anyone here know that 10 members of a community can get together and...
10%.
10% or whatever, of a community, and...
Which is about 10.
But, you know, so, I mean, I just think there are so many things our communities don't know about, you know, statute 71, section 14E, that just the education process alone. So, with or without those three lines, and I would agree with you, that's the urgency in moving our district forward. But to, but there's also an emergency to making sure we're doing what's right and legal. And right now, we have a document that doesn't allow for that.
And if I may, I, that, you know, we are, we are cleaning up everything.
Yeah.
So I think that this is a really important part of that process, to what end remains to be seen, right? But I think many of you have made this point already, that at minimum, getting the actual, the statutory pieces and the legal pieces in place has to be, at least be the bare minimum.
And to Sarah's point, and I don't know who asked the question, but we, we get nine tenths of the way, we get that approved, reapproved by the commissioner, we have the document to say, okay, here's what we have to work on. We've already done the process once, now we really focus on the PR of just that piece, and then redo it. And in that time, we can do it on our own. And similar to the superintendent search, we have someone guide us the first time, and then...
We did it.
You know, we, you guided us the second time. But, I don't know. So I guess the question that I have, and I'm sure everybody has, is, Jason and Matt, where would we get money?
So, we're going to, in the next item, show you where and how we are saving about $10,000. And I'm being somewhat facetious, I mean, you truly will be saving $10,000, but we would be able, we would be able to locate those resources for this, without question.
And from my perspective, and it's not that I don't think Sarah would be a, and is going to be a phenomenal... From my perspective, it is worth the time and money to have that third, that outside neutral party.
I agree.
Absolutely.
I think that, I think that's a really important, and the experience that they come with.
That they bring, yeah.
I mean, they're able to speak to the other towns that have gone through this. So, the towns, you know, the concerns that stakeholders bring, they can bring their experience of what they've been through, and I think sharing experiences is something that, you know, we might lack, because we would have to go on and do the research for where they've actually lived it. So I think a neutral party is really important in a process like this, so I agree with you.
To Tammy's point, we could always entertain a capped amount in a contract, not to exceed a certain amount, and then should this process get us to a point where, you know, we're not, we're not there yet, or we're not finished yet, we certainly could come back to the committee to say, okay, you know, we're going to need X amount of dollars to move to that next, you know, leg. I mean, with the hopes of doing it all within that first capped amount, of course. But just so, you know, it's not an open, you know, it's not an open BO, right? At $90 an hour.
Yeah, and I think the community would want to know that this is not affecting class, you know, something of this nature would not be affecting class size. We're talking 10 to 15,000. That's not, that's not a teacher's salary, that's not, I think we need to be clear with people that, you know, if this is something that we're pushing, it's a one-time item, and I think it's in the best interest of the students, so I think we need to look at it that way, and it's not affecting class size, and it's not affecting their child, per se, when we're looking at budget. So Jane, are you looking for a vote, or are you looking for discussion?
Maybe a motion to enter a bidding process, since we have to do, they said they had language for it, and they said that there are only one, we could choose not to accept a bid when it came in, and have further discussion, but...
They have a sample RFP.
You have it.
I have it on my computer.
Okay, yeah. He said, he said he had it, so I didn't realize he had given it to you already.
And so, does that go, like, like, out for bid? Posted for bid, and then if they're only the game in town, then...
As our procurement officer?
Yeah, we would put it out, we would put out an RFP, and then have a deadline for responses, and then I would bring the responses to the committee.
And at that point, we could choose to...
Accept it.
Continue, accept one, or not accept any, or not do it.
Some black stallion came out of the thing.
It's actually, it's actually under $25,000, so, in essence, we could theoretically not even do a request for proposals. We could contact three different vendors that we would think would be providing these same type of services, and get written estimates from them.
But I think we're unaware of anybody else who does it, is what I heard earlier. So, should we put it out and see if anybody surprises us with some skills?
Can we make a motion to put it out with a cap, of not to bring to the committee anything over a certain budget?
Absolutely. I was going to mention before, to Tammy, to Tammy's point, of where this funding would come. In my opinion, people start talking about E and D, and they say, well, are you going to offset some of the cost of the budget with E and D? And the answer is, you shouldn't be using E and D for something that's not going to be sustainable. You know, a teacher's salary shouldn't be coming from that, but clearly, this is a one-time...
Good point.
Yeah.
Cost. We have some money set aside, this is exactly the type of thing that that could be used for.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into, put out a bid, yeah, but not to exceed over 15,000.
Second. Any discussion? Everybody's good with that amount? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of putting out an RFP to begin a regional agreement amendment process, with a cap on any proposal not to exceed $15,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll get you some better word for what we just said. Okay.
Perfect.
Superintendent?
Just two items. The first, in your packet, you will see a reorganization overview for our technology department. And like the other reorganizations we have looked at this year, you will see what the current school year 1920 design, structures, positions, and costs would look like, which we'll review in a moment. And then you'll see the proposed, just to the right of that, school year 1920 design would look like, with the total at the bottom. And so, presently, our current design for our technology department for next year, as it is designed right now, would consist of one network and integration administrator at $100,000, one computer and network technician at $65,575, and then one help desk technician at $40,800. That total is $206,375. I think it says 200,000, I should say 206,375. We are proposing, in place of that, is to actually eliminate the network and integration administrator position at $100,000. Instead, we would like to contract with an outside technology provider that can work with the district, which, you know, in our size, would certainly make a lot of sense to assist with the long-range technology plan for the district, that would be onsite weekly to support the help desk technicians and the computer network technicians, and would, so to be able to provide some of that troubleshooting onsite weekly, would be on call seven days a week, to be frank, and provide a different type of service than what we have now. What we would do with that $100,000 is essentially put 40,000 toward the contract for that outside technology provider. We would also put 40,000 towards a second help desk technician. We need more boots on the ground. We need more direct service to teachers and kids in the classroom. We do not need more administration in the technology area. We need more direct service.
Would they be housed in separate places?
So, we would, what we would do is work with the technology provider, the contract that we would create, and we would lay out the best plan of action for that, in terms of where each of the three technicians should, you know, should be based out of, and what should be the main focus, in addition to just the typical, what we refer to as break fix, so when a device breaks, we just repair it. But we would look to actually build capacity in key technological areas of the work, in each one of those three individuals, that our contractor would actually do with them through that process. And then we would additionally request of that money, about $10,000, for any unforeseen kind of network or hardware needs. We're not sure, we're not sure what some of those additional needs might be, until we onboard our contractor for that. So, you will see that the actual total cost of this proposed structure would be $196,375,000, which would actually save the district $10,000, moving in this direction.
So, just to be clear, because it's not posted, we're reducing an administrator cost by about $60,000.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear, that I think that's important, because we always hear, you know, you know, what about administration? And I think that's important to break it down, whereas, you know, what's going to affect the student directly is going to be those help desk technicians, especially in the world of MCAS these days, when you need people on the ground and making sure that everything's working the way it should, and the amount of help that's needed to do that successfully, to cut that administrative position by 60,000, and to support students in the classroom, I think is really important. So I just wanted to make that clear to the public.
Anyone else, any other?
I do, so, the outside technology provider, is that something that goes out for bid? Is that something that we, you know who you would want to use? How does that work?
Do you want to, do you want to address that, Matt?
Well, currently, there is a company that we have been using to do consulting work, to assess where we stand with our technology, and where our needs are, and where our limitations are right now within our department. They are fairly specific to the work that they do, and the fact that they would be able to provide onsite support as well, probably a minimum of one, one day a week, that someone would be onsite. It would be possible to go through a sole source procurement, to get, to get them to be the provider of that contract. The other option is to put something out for, there's definitely a different process. People are interchanging the invitation for bids versus a request for proposals. An invitation for bids ends up being based solely on price, whereas the request for proposals gives more latitude with respect to qualifications that we're looking for in providers of whatever service. So, that could be another option, if we, again, identified, identified that there might be other, other providers. Similarly, even with the Mars, with the Mars presentation, if they're the only ones that we know, and we've done adequate research to say that we can't find anyone else that provides these services, we could also do a sole source provider.
So, I mean, with the Mars thing, I would think that's a pretty niche field, but this, I don't think, I think there's probably more than one provider that would be able to do this kind of work. So that's why I asked the question.
But I would also be concerned, if you, if you're opening up your system so that people can see what's in your system...
But we're saying we've already identified our issues.
With this, with this...
With this particular person, so why, why couldn't you say, these are our needs?
We've had, we've had a, I wouldn't say we've identified all of our issues. We've done a preliminary assessment of what the needs are.
Kind of bucket areas.
Big bucket areas, and where some of our limitations are. It has not been very, it hasn't been specific to the, to the, you know, pieces of data, or...
I guess my point is, if this company knows your buckets, and they're basing their, a number on, on your buckets, then other companies can also look at your buckets and say, I can fill them with, you know what I mean? So I just think that, I know, I know, I'm not always the clearest, but I just think in the computer field, there's much more competition than certainly a regional agreement consultant. So, I just asking the question.
One more question, too many questions today. So, do we have a contract provider right now that kind of holds the key to our security, per se? Or is it particular to just our building and one person, let's hold, holds the Google Cloud, let's say?
Right, right now, we have one individual, and, well, our security, so to speak, is maintained internally.
So, is there a benefit to having a provider hold something like that versus an individual to the, to the district? Do they have more, I don't know, security?
More objectivity from their...
Or more, more opportunity to make things more secure? Because as we know, you know, internet and security is really changing.
Yeah, sure.
So I'm just wondering, you know, when you go with a provider, do these providers have, you know, I guess, just more security to hold?
Like better access to increased security?
Correct. That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, because I don't know anything about technology, per se, but I just, I know, you know, based off of, you know, just my experience in the last few years, or weeks, should I say, that, you know, a security breach is becoming all more common these days. So my, my concern would be, is there one provider that might have more opportunity to...
So, so there's a lot of different aspects to the software and the, and the technology that we use in the district. So it's not an easy one-shot answer, where like, all of our technology is secured by like, one product, or one provider.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
So this type of a consultant, or this type of service, may be able to identify safer ways to house our, to house our information.
Okay.
Or may start facilitating the move to more cloud-based, off-site, secure facilities. But like, our wireless networking configurations, they're in one spot. Our financial information is on another server, which is really separate from the configurations. But someone that has the vision to move those things in a different direction could...
Provider, right?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Help with security.
Okay.
I don't know that they'd provide one security answer, though.
Right, but I just, I'm just wondering, security-wise, you know, with...
The goal would be to increase security.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to move forward with the reorganization of the technology department. By Aaron, is there a second? About you, Jack?
Yep.
Any other question or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
And the other item is just, we need to, I need authorization from the school committee to enter into an MOA with the Unit C, barding unit, to look at their evaluation tool. We need to better align the evaluation tool with the, with the educator evaluation tool, the teacher's tool. So right now, they're very, very different, and both Unit C and administration wants to sit at the table and discuss what that tool really needs to look like, because we are not finding that it's measuring the right things, and especially not providing the right feedback to those paraprofessionals, in particular, that are working directly with our kids. So we want to sit with Unit C negotiating team, and renegotiate the evaluation tool for them.
So, this isn't an MOA, this is to enter into conversations for an MOA? Is that correct?
So, yes, so we want...
To give him the authority to do so.
Yeah.
Yep. He does, he does negotiations, we don't, for Unit C?
No, we do.
We do.
We do.
But this is for an MOA?
Right, but an MOA, I believe, we have to, one of us has to be sitting at that table, correct?
So, so I don't know.
I could be wrong.
I mean, we, I, that I don't know. I'd have to find that out.
So we don't have anything in our, in our, in any of our contracts that indicate how memos of understanding are developed or initiated or, or amended?
But we're all just signing one that was made because of a vote that we did.
So.
What's different, right?
That's for the last.
This is, this is different.
I don't know. If you've ever sat on an MOA, seen that we're kind of cleaning that language up in the, uh, the unit A contract negotiations.
Well, I put until a year ago, we weren't even seeing them.
Yes, right. Well, and we did not when the, when, when our teachers' union had an evaluation committee to look at how the teacher eval, would meet the state guidelines. Did any of us sit on that? I don't.
No, but I, I believe it has to go out to the, to the unit and then come back and we get the information.
So we, we get what they'll want to bring forward.
That's the only question I would have about that, though, is the, the, those, the unit A and unit C's contracts are with the school committee.
Right, that, I guess, when you said negotiations, that, that was my question.
My question about who, but it's being done as an MOA because it's mid, it's like mid.
They're not up till next year.
Right. Okay, that, that clarified.
But are we giving permission, so?
We're giving, we are giving permission.
Jason, to talk to unit C?
To develop an evaluation tool.
And then it's going to come back to us for approval? Okay, so I think how it's writ, how it's written on here seems to say that we're going to jump right to and trust Jason to enter into that MOA.
Right.
So we're giving Jason permission to develop
Right.
the MOA that will then come back.
Should say, enter into conversations about an MOA.
That was my question.
That's what I thought, again, what I was hearing, but it wasn't what I read, so. Okay.
Right.
So.
And does this align with the, um, this obviously, the one they have now doesn't really align with teachers? No, okay. That was my question. I, I just wanted to make sure it, the one they have doesn't align with this.
Yeah.
Right, and so we're trying to get everything to a.
Actually, a good thing. We're trying to increase the level of
Absolutely.
feedback.
I'll make a motion to enter into an MOA with unit C for the evaluation tool.
To enter into discussions regarding an MOA.
Excuse me, to enter into discussions.
Regarding an MOA.
Actually, no. I'm sorry. I have to abstain.
Yeah, you do.
Sorry.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, I know.
Someone else make that motion?
Okay. To give Jason, give the superintendent
The authority.
The authority to enter in discussions regarding the evaluation tool with unit C. Yes.
Yeah.
Second. Any other discussion? On the discussion of the discussion. Hearing none. All those in, in favor of granting the superintendent the authority to develop a memo of understanding with unit C on the evaluation tool that will come back to the school committee for approval, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, you have the authority.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. Just so that folks at home know, uh, one of the things that we did vote upon at our last meeting and was signed by, um, did it get signed by unit C?
They don't need to.
They don't need to.
Just unit A and B.
By the unit A and unit B was that the last day of school for this academic year currently will be Friday, June 14th, and it will be a full day of school. And that students will also have a half day of school on Friday, May 24th. So that's a change to the calendar. The Friday prior to Memorial Day will be a half day for students. And the staff will continue on, with a half day of PD. And Friday, June 14th, will be the last day of school as a full school day.
The one-call message is going out to families tomorrow evening at 5:30.
Okay. School committee forum.
Nothing at this time?
Nothing.
Jack?
No, ma'am.
Wendy?
I do have one thing. So on May 16th, there is a rally, a Fund the Future Rally for Public Education in Boston. And it is from 1 to 5 is the day of action and 5 to 7 is a march. And it's to go to the State House and support public education. And so I just want to throw that out there because it's important to share that information.
Do you know what day of the week that is?
It is a Thursday. Support student education in our public schools and colleges. And it's to urge legislatures to pass the PROMISE Act, increasing public education and funding by more than $1 billion a year. And the CHERISH Act, increasing public and higher education funding by more than $500 million. So I just want to urge people to, if they can make it out that night, that would be great. If it's May 16th, it's on Thursday.
At the State House.
At the State House. Yes.
Thank you. Tammy?
I have two things. One, first is a question. Is this an appropriate time to ask for something to be on a future agenda?
Yes, absolutely.
So Matt and/or Jason, the new cherry sheet list came out with that new, very large charter school number. I'm wondering if you all could put that on our next agenda to explain to us and the public how that impacts the certified budget that we've already pushed or approved? Because I think there's some buzz out there and we're, we're having folks reach out to the representatives and such. But I, there are some people who aren't quite sure what that means. And so if we could do, put that to the agenda. And the second thing is our BMR prom is on Friday night. And so I just want to, I, I wish that all the kids have a great time and that they make it home safely. And that is all.
You don't want to tell us where your daughter's going to college?
Uh, she's Anna Maria. She decided today.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I am all good. Our next meeting is May 8th. So, motion to adjourn? By Jack?
Second. Second, everybody.
Tim? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for making this a regular meeting.